Director Lapour.
Here. Announcement of the open public meeting law.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the open public meeting law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including an annual notice adopted reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk, posted in administration building, and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Duffy, please lead us in the pledge.
It would be my pledge. Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in whose soul the liberty and justice roll.
Please remain standing. For a moment in silence, remember all the men and women who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces and who have died from COVID-19, especially the 2,259 residents of Passaic County. And while I were standing, we had the bad news today that Director Lyons, who served the county for the last 50 years, passed away today, so please keep him in your thoughts. Thank you. Need a motion to approve the minutes for February 27, 2025? Motion made by Duffy.
Second.
Second by Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett. Devoire.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Lapour.
Yes. Need a motion to approve the proclamations?
Make that motion.
Motion made by Duffy.
Second.
Second by Lozera. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Devoire.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Lapour.
Yes. Administrator's report.
Thank you, Director. We'd like to... Okay, I'm sorry. Ignore me. Ignore me. Ignore. Motion to ignore.
Second.
A third.
I'd like to welcome everybody to our Irish Heritage Month, celebrating and honoring Mrs. Ursula Errett and Sister Colleen Clare, FMA. We're also going to start that off with our invocation. So Father Ryan? Now I'm wrong. We'll start with the pipes and drums.
It's good. Okay. Hello, everyone. Thank you for being here. I don't know if I was supposed to be introduced or just... We're winging it. We're gonna wing it because it's an Irish thing.
I don't want to get yelled at again.
I want to thank you all for being here. It's a bittersweet thing because this is my last St. Patty's Day after celebration, after 21 years with my good friend Pat Lapour, who has no green on, by the way. I mentioned that. So what am I supposed to do here? Father Ryan, I'm gonna introduce him?
Yes, you just have the invocation.
Okay, we're gonna ask Father Ryan to come up. Right? Lou?
Yeah, we're following the program.
Talk to me. I didn't read the program, actually. So Father Ryan, if you would come up and say the invocation, let's start this going here.
This is very confusing.
And Father Ryan, I might as well share with you, he shared with me, that he got a haircut today because the nuns were coming.
That's the truth.
So yours, fine.
I begged my barber to squeeze me in because the sisters are coming. If we stand, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. O God of goodness and mercy, hear our prayer as we begin this Lenten journey with you. Let us be honest with ourselves. As we look into our hearts and souls, noticing the times we have turned away from you, guide us as we humbly seek to re-put you into our lives and return your love. May humility guide our efforts to be reconciled with you and live forever in your abundant grace. Transform us this Lent, Heavenly Father. Give us the strength to make ourselves 100% available to you every day as we prepare for Easter. And we ask St. Patrick, the patron of Ireland, St. Bridget, the patroness, St. Lawrence O'Toole, St. Kevin of Glendaleock, and St. Oliver Plunkett to intercede for us and lead us to you. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Father.
So I get the privilege to read the proclamation for Mrs. Errett, and it's my privilege and my honor to do that. I know her son is a decorated police officer in Patterson, and we've been very good friends for a long, long time. So let me grab this. I'm sorry. I'm gonna make you stand there all night long. I'm not gonna dismiss the color. I want to thank the pipes and drums. These guys have been all over the place, and they're personal friends of mine, and they never miss a beat. And how about a applause? And I might as well tell you, they'll be at Duffy's Tavern, First and River Street, all weekend long, starting on Friday, going on till Monday. So corned beef, and I will dismiss you with my thank you so much for being here. Thank you. Pops and drums, Army Marines. On the right, quick, louder. So without further ado, let me ask Mrs. Errett, please come up. Wanna come up? Come on up. Come on, you help her up. Come on, do something, kid. Come on, you went to Notre Dame, all that money?
Notre Dame.
Notre Dame graduate. Not bad. Played football.
No, I'm not.
No, no, say it. You played football, it's all right. It's political here, make it up. It's all right. All right, let me... Whereas, in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional Irish Americans over the years, Passaic County Board of County Freiorders of the County of Passaic, it seems, it deems fitting and appropriate at this time to recognize Ursula Errett during its Irish-American heritage celebration. Whereas Ursula Eric was born and raised in Brooklyn, New York, and the eldest of six children. Whereas Ursula Errett attended St. Xavier's High School and then Hunter College, receiving a degree in education. Whereas Ursula Errett taught elementary school in Massapeekla, Long Island, for several years later to return to teaching full-time in Wayne School System, including Anthony Wayne Middle School and John F. Kennedy Elementary School until retirement in 1996. And whereas Ursula and Errett, paternal grandparents, came to the United States in 1893 from the counties of Mayo and Cavan of Ireland, residing first in Passaic, New Jersey, and then in Brooklyn. Whereas Ursula Errett was a parishioner of Immaculate Heart of Mary in Paconak Enunciation Church in Wayne and currently Notre Dame Church in North Caldwell, New Jersey. And whereas Ursula Errett was involved in the Little Sisters of the Poor Auxiliary as well as a pro-life group, Birth Right, assisting expectant mothers, participated in the Right to Life March in Washington, DC. And in 1998, she traveled to Ireland with an organized trip by Notre Dame Church herself in her Irish culture and learned where her family came from. Whereas Ursula Errett is a proud wife in Bartholomew Errett, and both are proud parents of four children, four grandchildren, and recently became great-grandparents. Now therefore be proclaimed, this is my favorite part, it's like the Wizard of Oz, now therefore be proclaimed by the Passaic County Commissioners, that is, their party publicly recognizes and applauds Ursula Errett for the significant contributions she has made for the County of Passaic and the community. Be it further proclaimed that this board congratulates Ursula Errett for being named 2025 Irish Woman of the Year. Congratulations, young lady.
Thank you all ever so much. There's something new every day at 93 years of age, and I thank the good Lord for each day. Wonderful. And I know you've had prayers, but this is my wish for all of you. It came to me from the daughter of one of my dear friends, Murphy, by the way, and my maiden name was Barry. So anyway, for all of you, may your mornings bring joy and your evenings bring peace. May your troubles grow less as your blessings increase. God bless you all, and thank you very much. Thank you, cherries.
The mover and the shaker.
I don't know about that. Come on, go sit down. You had enough. Come on, kid, get up. Yeah, picture? I'm sorry. Mrs. Errett, we're gonna have a picture. Whether you like it or not, get over here. Yeah. Want to move this back? And don't forget to take some soda bread home.
Yes.
Don't forget some soda bread, please, please. Next up is, was special to me because Sister is a Silesian nun, and my uncle, Father Vincent Duffy, was a Silesian priest. And I don't, I'm gonna ask my commissioner here, who's an educator herself, and Sister, if you'd come up, Sister Clare, Sister Colleen, not Clare.
We have a lot in common. We're both teachers. Went to Catholic school all my life. Catholic. You have this. Okay, so I get the pleasure of reading this proclamation for Sister Colleen. Whereas, in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional Irish Americans over the years, the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to recognize Sister Colleen Clare, FMA, during this Irish-American heritage celebration. Whereas Sister Colleen is the 14th out of 16 children born to Joseph and Rosemary Clare, raised in southeast New York State. And whereas Sister Colleen graduated summa cum laude from Felician University with a bachelor's in elementary education and religious studies, also holds a master's in educational leadership from Montclair State University. Whereas Sister Colleen has been a Silesian sister since 1992 and served nine years as vocational director of her province, and during that time, 58 young women entered the order. And whereas Sister Colleen, for years, taught in schools administered by the Silesian Sisters, both in Patterson, New Jersey, and Tampa, Florida. Whereas Sister Colleen Clare is a former principal of St. Anthony's School in Hawthorne, New Jersey, former head of school of Mary Help of Christians Academy in North Hail in New Jersey, and currently serves as Mother Provincial of Silesian Sisters of St. John Bosco in Hail in New Jersey. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Sister Colleen Clare, FMA, for the significant contributions she has made to the County of Passaic and to the community. Be it further proclaimed that this board congratulates Sister Colleen Clare, FMA, for being named the 2025 Irish Woman of the Year for the County of Passaic.
I'm very grateful to receive this award. It is really a great honor, and I receive it in the name of every Silesian sister. You know, all of us, we're all Irish on St. Patrick's Day, so there's a lot of, there's the O'Ronaldies, the real Flanagan's, who's the true blood Irish. And I just feel very grateful, really, for that beautiful heritage that we have, but also for the beautiful gift that we have of being born in the United States. I had a professor in college who said, you know, if you consider life like a lottery, we won. Like, we were born here, you know? What a beautiful gift. I served two years as a missionary in Egypt, and during that time, there was actually a lottery for the people to get a visa just to come and visit the United States. Think of what a blessing we have. So I thank God, really. I thank God for all the blessings that I've received in my life and for this beautiful gift as well. Thank you all.
I'm gonna do this for you.
Oh, no, you blew it. Like, I wanted to see.
Just Father Ryan again, but before I do, I want to mention that, do you know that Duffy's Tavern, First and River Street, we open Friday, Saturday, Sunday with corned beef and bagpipes? Father, you're up, and thank you so much.
And Lou, who is the clerk, he wants to remind you to take soda bread, so you see all that soda bread over there? Enough for everyone, two for everyone, or three even, and then we'll have a collection. No. I just wanted to mention, you know, I had sisters, grammar school, high school, college, four master's degrees. I got my doctorate somewhere else. I called Sister and asked her if she would take the award, and she wanted to give it to someone else. I love nuns like that. "Oh, no, give it to Sister Theresa." And then Sister, she says, "Oh, no, you take it." So then we asked for a little bio. Sister wrote enough to fill the back of an 18-cent stamp. It was nothing. And Lou called me and said, "Father, there's like three lines here. What do we do?" But then he knows the computer and he found it, but these sisters are the most humble, wonderful sisters in the world, and we're grateful that the Silesians are here in the diocese and even the diocese of Tampa. They do so much wonderful work with the poor, you know? Wonderful, wonderful work, and never ask for anything in return. So, and when they told you that I got a haircut, that I did, because I didn't want to, I was all straggly and I didn't want the sisters to see me, that's how much, and I love my hair. So, so thank you, Sister Colleen, for being here, and Sister Katie, and Sister Mary, the Trinity. All right, that's all. God bless.
I just want to make mention about Lou. Lou and his staff. We never do anything without, these guys are the best. Lou leads the charge and the rest of his staff, but I want to thank you, you know, for 21 years.
It's an honor and pleasure, sir.
Sure he is, thank you.
Yep.
Did I mention that Duffy's Tavern is...
Just for the record, could you mention it? All right, before we move on, I just want to acknowledge our county clerk, Daniela Irelandhoff. Our auditor, Steve Wilcox. And a member of the Passaic County Improvement Authority, Mike Ramaglia. And Director, that concludes my administrator's report.
Thank you, Mark. Resolution to exceed the county budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank pursuant to NJSA 48. I can't see that far down. I'll take a motion to suspend the regular order of business.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Bartlett, second by Duffy. Roll call.
You guys want to get out of here? Take some soda bread.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Devoire.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Lapour.
Yes.
Director. Can you, can we take a three-minute break?
Sure. All right, we're gonna take a three-minute recess. Ask for Lou.
Yeah. If you guys want, you can...
Maybe they want a snack.
They don't want it.
What? We're fun.
Okay, folks, we're back. Number two on the agenda, resolution to establish a county budget appropriation limit and establish a cap bank pursuant to NJSA 48, colon 4-4515, et cetera. In motion. Need a motion? Yes.
So moved.
Made by Bartlet, second by Duffy, roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Duffy, Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes, does anyone present desire to be heard on the 2025 cap resolution?
Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Motion made by Duffy, second by Lozera, to close, roll call.
County Commissioners. Bartlet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Motion for final adoption of resolution to exceed the county budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank pursuant to NJSA 48. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Made by Bartlet.
Second.
By Lozera. Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Next is a resolution to exceed the county budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank pursuant to NJSA 48. I did that already, right? Okay. typo, it's there twice. Okay. I take a motion to adopt the 2025 Passaic County budget.
No. I used that as a heading, I apologize.
Okay.
Director, I need, I need a, go to eight, please.
Eight, motion to open the public hearing on the 2025 budget, Passaic County budget, introduced February 11, 2025.
So moved.
Motion made by Bartlet.
Second.
Second made by DeVore, roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Does anyone present desire to be heard of the 2025 Passaic County budget?
Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Motion made by Duffy, second by Lozera, roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Motion to amend the county budget approved on February 11, 2025.
So moved.
Motion made by Bartlet.
Second.
Second by Lozera, roll call.
County Commissioners, Bartlet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Okay. Motion to adopt the 2025 Passaic County budget.
Move it.
Second.
Motion made by Lozera, second by Bartlet, roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Motion to resume the regular order of business.
So moved.
Motion made by DeVore, second by Duffy, roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. The Commissioner reports, I mentioned this evening that we lost a true friend of Passaic County and to the people of Passaic County, Bob Lyons. Just want to read a couple of things of what he's accomplished in his 50 years of service to Passaic County. He served, he's a member of numerous state police organizations, he served as commissioner of the New Jersey State Police Training Commission, state president of the New Jersey State Police Academy Directors Association, member of the New Jersey Chapter of FBI National Academy, member of the Passaic County Police and Fire Emerald Society. He's also served with the Patterson Police Department, Passaic County Park Police, and Passaic County Prosecutor's Office. As you can see, he dedicated an awful lot to all of us here in Passaic County, and he will be missed. Next we have, Sandy, you have anything?
No.
All right, good. Well, does anybody have a report?
Just very briefly, I want to acknowledge our county clerk, Danielle Ireland-Enhoff, who's here and hard at work on the first of Passaic County's many elections of 2025. And if anybody's watching in Bloomingdale, you have until 8 o'clock PM to vote in your school bond ordinance election, which is taking place today, to support, I believe it's the construction of a new school there in Bloomingdale. Want to acknowledge our county auditor, Steve Wilcox, whose fine work on the budget made it possible for us to take all those votes we just took so quickly. And finally, I just want to wish Lou an early happy birthday.
And I want to wish you an early happy birthday, too, so. And, and Director is...
What about Lapore?
...days from here, the 14th, yes. Happy birthday, Director, I'm sorry.
Just a director from Wood. Bob Lyons, I knew Bob Lyons, I worked with Bob Lyons. He was a unique Irishman, great guy. He used, he never drank during Lent. I'll give you a real quick story. Never drank during Lent, and he liked his libations. And one Lent, he put iced tea in an Irish whiskey bottle, and he put it in the kitchen table, and his wife came down, and he was drinking out of it, and his wife went, wow, what do you, you know, you never drank during Lent. And he was just the type of guy that loved to laugh, he was a family guy, he was a law enforcement man, and he was a true credit to Passaic County, and God rest his soul. I couldn't, couldn't sit up here without saying some kind of words about him, and we're gonna miss him. Passaic County has lost a good and dear soldier. Thank you.
Move it.
Second.
Made by Lozera, second by Bartlet, roll call.
County. County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes, anyone from the public wishing to be heard, please step forward, state your name and address, and remember that anything that you say is a matter of public record.
Ready? Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
By Duffy, second by DeVore, to close, roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Number one is resolution authorizing the chief financial...
Yes.
That's just an indication, right? Resolution authorizing the chief financial officer to execute budget transfers between the 2024 budget appropriations pursuant to NJSA 48, colon four dash 59. Need a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Bartlet.
Second.
Second by Duffy, roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Next order of business is the consent agenda. Do we have any, any commissioners wanting to pull anything from the agenda?
Nope.
Okay. There's no late starters? No amendments? Oh, I love this. Okay, so, N1 to, I'll take a motion for N1 to N47.
I'll move it.
Second. By Lozera, second by Duffy, roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Personnel, we need a motion?
Personnel.
Motion made by Bartlet.
Second.
Second by Lozera, roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Need a motion on the bills?
The bills.
Second.
Motion made by Bartlet, second by Lozera, roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Before we adjourn, I also like to thank Steve Wilcox, our auditor, great job, couldn't do without you.
And let's not forget Rich, Rich can also, can't leave someone in the front row not introduced. Thank you for your hard work as well.
Yes, absolutely. They make a great team. Take a motion to adjourn?
Before I make that motion, I just want to mention that Duffy's Tavern will be open Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Happy St. Patty's Day, everyone.
Happy St. Patty's Day.
Is that the motion or a plug?
Duffy made the motion.
And I'll second.
By Duffy.
Here you go.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
DeVore.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes, thank you and good night, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.